Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, April 8, 2021. We will begin with a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Amy
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amy. Calling of the roll?
Counselperson Aller.
Present.
Counselperson Azar.
Present.
Counselperson Boland.
Present.
Counselperson Crossen.
Present.
Counselperson DeBon.
Here.
Counselperson Elliott.
Here.
Counselperson Garrison.
Here.
Counselperson Lautermilke.
Here.
Counselperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
We will not be having public comment this evening. Corrections from the journal of the previous meeting?
There are none.
Communications from the mayor?
I did not receive any.
Reports from city officials?
Mr. President, I would just like to take a moment for the council to thank our fire chief, Jeff Fisher, as he's getting ready to retire after thirty-one and a half years of service to this community, and thirteen years as our chief. I think he's taken our fire department in a good direction, has set it up for someone else to step in his shoes and take over. And I would just like to thank him for his service and wish him well in his new endeavors and his next chapter of his life and stepping into grandpa duties here soon. So, Jeff, congratulations and thank you.
As you -- one more report from city officials. I hope I count as one.
Maybe.
Do you all recall Paige Sansone was here last week to talk about our city finances and so did the mayor. There was a paragraph in the newspaper last Friday. In an overview of the city's finances, Sansone said, "Looking back, the city has seen growth since 2016 with the net asset. The city has also been able to improve cash reserves from a negative 7.2 million in 2016 into the positive 5.1 million at the end of 2020." So that is quite an improvement and something you should be proud of, frankly, she said. We don't see things like that very often. I don't know that it's in her written report, but it was in this verbal comment. So I just wanted to point that out to everybody. Thank you. Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Any items previously tabled?
There are none.
Any tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
We have one. Special Ordinance State 2021, rezoning of a property located at 118 North 3rd Street. Area planning gave a favorable recommendation.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Pete Sakopoulos. My address is 676 Ohio Street, Terre Haute, Indiana, 47807. I'm here at the last meeting before you. Tim Hayes, who is my partner in this venture, was here and presented. Mr. Hayes' wife has had some illness, so I'm here pinch-hitting for him tonight. Sorry, you all have to deal with a second-string Greek, but that's as good as we can do tonight. So, are there any questions? Would you like me to go over the presentation itself?
No public comment here?
Thee.
Any questions?
No, we did not.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
Todd?
If there are no questions, I move for approval of Special Ordinance Number Eight, 2021.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, the second was?
Oh, somebody.
Neil? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded -- moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilman Garrison, and we approve Special Ordinance Number Eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank all of you.
Special Ordinance Eleven, 2021, reestablishing the property tax rate on the cumulative capital development fund.
Counsel, just briefly, I know the mayor couldn't be here this evening due to a prior commitment. I think it was established or explained, I think clearly, at your last meeting. I know I wasn't here, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. We have to reestablish this from time to time in order to guarantee that we're able to collect the CCD money. So we'd ask that you pass this as presented.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we get -- okay.
I was here at the last meeting -- oh, wait a minute. My name is Donald Wayne Hyde. I live at 1411 Poplar Street, Terre Haute, Indiana, Lifetime City. Now, I was here at the last meeting when the mayor said a few things before I spoke, and then I spoke, and he then stepped up and kind of clarified it. When he clarified it, I'm not buying that. You, the city council, and the mayor together decides how we spend the tax dollars and what we spend it on. And I think the voters are going to get a little tired of getting the two-step here, where nobody said, "Well, it's their responsibility." No, it's their responsibility. And nobody, until they've decided how they're going to spend the money, tells the public how and why they're spending the money. I'm afraid we live in a democracy, and I think the voters are getting a little tired of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilman DeBon?
If there be no more discussion, I move that we pass Special Ordinance Eleven, 2021.
It's been moved by Councilman DeBon, seconded by Councilmember Aller, that we approve Special Ordinance Eleven, 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Items on first reading?
Special Ordinance Four, 2021, rezoning of property located at 1108 South 13th Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation. Just a reminder to the council that all of the special ordinances will need a vote to take action.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm with the law firm of Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowery. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of the petitioners, Keyes Properties LLC. They're asking tonight for the corner lot that used to house Homies BBQ to be rezoned from C1 to C5. The purpose of this is Keyes owns NRK Electrical, and they own the next two lots. And there, they have two older buildings. And if you've been by there, you see in the evenings, a lot of trucks outside, a lot of equipment. Their hope is that this property can be rezoned, they can combine the three lots, and then build one big building that'll house and store all their equipment and -- including trucks and all their materials. That's why they're asking for this to be rezoned. I'd be happy to answer any question you may have. As Michelle mentioned, last night, it went through area plan. The staff gave it a favorable report, as well as the area plan gave it a favorable recommendation. To my knowledge, there's been no one who has contacted area plan office and had any issues with this rezoning. Again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Donald Wayne Hyde, I live at 1411 Poplar Street. This time, I'm going to repeat myself. I live at 1411 Poplar Street. I know the property that they're talking about. I go by it all the time, and so does most of the people that live in the neighborhood. If indeed they're going to tear down and build a brand-new building there and improve the neighborhood, improve the traffic flow, improve the ability to do business, I'm all for it, and I think most of the people around me would agree.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
No.
Oh, do you have a comment? Go ahead.
I don't. I was going to make a motion. I was going to go ahead, since we've got four of these that we need to vote to take action on. I was going to make a motion to take action on Special Ordinance Four, Five, Six, and Seven tonight.
No.
No?
No.
Okay. I withdraw that motion.
I -- I would do one at a time.
Okay. I withdraw.
Okay. So, help me out here.
We just need a council member to make a motion to take action on Special Ordinance Four, 2021, and then a second.
Mr. President, I would just like to actually agree that I think this would be an improvement on that corner since Homies went out of business and they've started using it and all the trucks and everything are out there. It can look pretty haggard there, and I say are going to put most of those in the building most of the time. I think that would be an improvement on that corner. And if there is no further comment by counsel, I move that we vote to take action on Special Ordinance Four, 2021.
It's been moved by Councilmember Crossen and seconded by Councilmember Lautermilke that we approve taking action on Special Ordinance Number Four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Mr. President, there's no further discussion by counsel. I move that we approve Special Ordinance Four, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Crossen and seconded by Councilmember Lautermilke that we approve as Special Ordinance Four, 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, Michelle?
Special Ordinance Five, 2021, rezoning of property located at 2517 North 13th Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jeff Llewellyn. I'm here this evening on behalf of joint petitioners, the current owners of the property, Mr. and Mrs. Amigo, and then the proposed purchaser of the property, Change Inc., an Indiana nonprofit corporation. They are purchasing the property contingent upon the rezoning taking place through the council, be it this evening or next month, as we decide. The property is located at 2517 North 13th Street in Terre Haute. It does come from the area plan commission meeting with a favorable recommendation, as well as supported by a favorable recommendation by the staff. I know you are all familiar with the Twelve Points area. This property is located a few blocks north of the Twelve Points area on 13th Street. As you go north on 13th Street from the Twelve Points area, you'll see that Club Soda is located a couple of blocks north of the Twelve Points area. North of that, a block is Sacred Hearts Church. And then a block north of that, on the southeast corner, is Remnants Antiques, a retail store. And I give you those descriptions to show the different uses that are developing within this area, as well as, we all know, the development that's taking place commercially within the Twelve Points area. The subject property is on the same block with the Remnants retail store, about midway down on that block. Our proposed change is from the current R1 single-family classification to an R1 planned development classification. The need for the rezoning specifically is really related to the use intended for the property and the project proposed by Change Inc. And that use would be to have this home serve as a reentry residence for individuals who achieve an alternate sentencing and/or release from, be it Vigo County Jail, county, city, or county jail, through the court system. All individuals that would come there would be individuals who have been approved through the court system by a judge, as well approved by the prosecutor's office, and as well approved by Change Inc. So it's not a home that would be open to anyone, but only approved individuals that we believe are fitted for the rehabilitation purpose that this home is designed for. And as we talk about that use, part of the use and development of the program is to have the individuals work as a family unit of sort. So although we're asking for a change in zoning, we really don't want to change the characteristic of the home or its use. We still want it to appear as a single-family resident. The individuals living there would number from eight to twelve individuals. There would be 24-hour, seven-day-a-week supervision. The home as well would have security measures. Although the individuals that will be there are classified as Class VI felony or lower, so we're not having violent individuals, we're not having sex offenders, higher-level crimes. So there isn't the risk or maybe concern for the individuals living there at that level. I will tell you, this program is supported by the Vigo County Court System and as well the Vigo County Prosecutor's Office. I believe Mr. Rob Roberts is somewhere with us, thank you, this evening, to speak a little bit on behalf of the county prosecutor's position on this and their involvement in this. As well with me this evening is Mr. Sashi Kumaran, who is the principal officer of Change Inc. He'll tell you a little bit about himself, but I'll tell you initially, he's a retired correctional officer from Putnamville Facility, 26 years of service. Also with us this evening is Mr. Kale Walker, who is with Indiana State University. He's the author of the program that we're proposing to be initiated here and serving as a consultant to Change Inc. So we believe that the project will be in fitting and keeping with the community and the neighborhood, and as well will offer an overall benefit to the community as well as the neighborhood of Terre Haute in rehabilitating individuals, preparing them for reentry into our community, and reducing, if not terminating, recidivism among these individuals. So we would respectfully request your approval of the rezoning. I have given you a handout with some summary of the individuals involved, and maybe most informative is the last page, page four of the exhibit I gave you, which gives you a bit of a summary of the program for days one through 30 from the initial intake evaluation and talking about the job placement within the first 30 days that they're looking to get these individuals training back into job placement. Days 31 through 60, social skills, critical thinking, teamwork. 60 through 91, character and confidence building, giving them the big picture, if you will, of reentering. And I'm glossing over that. I'll let the other gentleman tell you more detail of that. They're far more knowledgeable, and they've authored the program. So with that, I'll yield the floor and ask those gentlemen to come up in support. I would answer any questions that any of you might have at this time.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Sashi Kumaran. Councilmembers, thank you very much for this opportunity. I worked at the Indiana Department of Corrections for 26 years. I started off as an officer, became a sergeant, and retired in June 19, 2020, as a case manager. While as a case manager, I was also involved in the PLUS program, which is known as a purposeful living unit served. It is a faith and character-based dorm, and that's a program that I ran. It's basically what basically entails in the PLUS program is it shows these guys life skills. And also, while in the dorm, we kind of work together as a unit. So guys learn how to communicate, how to interact with each other, how to deal with situations. And also, we also do is -- sorry, excuse me, interview skills, different things, so when they go out, when they get released, they are more prepared. So basically, when I left DOC, my main purpose in doing this is because I felt there's a void, and in me wanting to get change started, it's going to help me get this going so I can help more guys, because the guys who come out of prison are somebody's son, somebody's brother, somebody's father, and they are going to be living in your neighborhoods. So basically, my thing is that to give these guys a second chance so they'd be able to prove themselves and become productive citizens.
Any questions?
Mr. President?
Martha?
Yes. You talk about your experience in the prison with men. Is this an all-male facility that you're proposing?
It's male.
Okay. Thank you. Agil.
Tammy?
So I asked this question last night, but it seems like you continue to focus on folks that are being released from the prison system.
No, no, no. This is coming from the jail, from Aviva County Jail. I'm talking about what I've done, you know what I'm saying?
I just wanted to clarify that for the group that wasn't there last night to hear that.
Where I was working at, yes.
Yeah, working directly with our local courts.
Yes, absolutely.
And looking for opportunities to place people in lieu of being incarcerated. Can you elaborate on the user fees? We talked about that a little bit last night, and I don't really feel like I got good clarification. It says in the handout you gave us at area planning last night that residents will be required to stay and will be responsible for all costs that are associated with the program. So can you tell us a little bit about what that looks like?
Basically, what my plan is, I'm in the process also. The house on 2517, if everything goes right, that is going to be donated to us by a couple in Greencastle, Indiana. Okay? They've already sold, and I went to the bank myself to try and get a loan, and I've already got the loan approved. So basically, by getting these guys in here, I've already got somewhat the costing for keeping these guys while they are there. So I'm going to start bearing the cost, because this is something that I want to do, and then as time goes by, this is something that I'm going to look at grants as well.
Agil. No, go ahead.
If I may, Counselperson Boland, I think your question goes to what's the charge going to be to the individual?
Exactly.
Who is living there for that 90 to 120 days?
Since they'll be responsible for all fees associated with the program.
Right.
So I want to know what that looks like.
And I don't know that we can say -- Mr. Walker may be able to tell you specifically costs, but the idea would be that, as Mr. Kumaran started, to indicate a lot of the cost of setup and operation would be funded through gifting and/or grants. He has talked with some local businesses who are willing to give in the way of food, businesses who give in the way of furnishing, that type of thing, so operational costs are kept to a minimum. Grants have been applied for, in addition to help operation. But I'm sure, and Mr. Roberts could probably speak to this, I would venture to guess that the Vigo County Court System, as they do in many other sentencing procedures, would add some cost, if you will, there'd be some determination that those individuals will have to pay as a user fee while they're there. And so in part, maybe that's a little bit of the -- I hate to say the punishment, but in part, the sentencing that they go through, they probably pay some type of user fee, much like there's a user fee for a drug and rehabilitation.
But that process hasn't been established yet.
That process has not been established. That fee has not been set.
Okay. And the process?
But?
With the courts has not been established yet.
That would -- the cost, et cetera, yes. That would have to be established through, I'm sure, the prosecutor's office and the court's approval.
Okay. Agil, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
May I take this off?
You take this.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kale Walker. Thank you for allowing me to come this evening. First and foremost, I want to kind of address Councilwoman Boland's question in regards of the fees. I took notes from last night. I'm a programmer. I created a program that I believe will offset recidivism. It has worked in the Vigo County School Corporations. It has worked at Indiana State University. I have also partnered with celebrity chef Jeff. Don't know if any of you guys, anyone watches the Food Network, but he is actually using my program right now in the Las Vegas project for at-risk students. This program that I've also created is also in Charlottesville, North Carolina, being used as an alternative sentencing program as well. To answer your question, ma'am, we plan on changing lives. We plan on having them employed within the first 30 days. So with them being employed, that means they're going to have a paycheck of some sort. By me taking notes, it seems that I will also be working on outlining policies and procedures, and I don't have a problem with that. I am certified in it. I do have the certifications and the skill set to do so. But while doing that, I want to look at how this is a win for everyone, not only Sashi's house, to make sure that it's sustainable, but also to make sure that these individuals meet the requirements with the courts. So as we develop these rules, these policies and so forth, and work with the prosecutors and the court system, as they're in this program for the 90 days, I'm hoping that they will be able to pay those fines and court costs as well. As far as them living in the house, there has to be some type of accountability. That's what we're here for. That's what my program is about, is actually trying to make these individuals responsible and accountable. So if it is determined at one point, as we start to build these policies and the rules and so forth, that they pay 10% of whatever their paycheck is, whatever their weekly paycheck, some type of nominal amount to the point where it shows that they're actually paying it forward as a fee to make sure that this house is sustained. However that looks, I'm not for sure. It's not my house. I don't pay the bills there. But one of the things that I want to do is make sure that I satisfy the court's needs, and that's writing into the policy that all court fines and fees are actually established. So I made notes to create house rules, meet and establish more connections and network opportunities with employers that are willing to work with us, other than Labor Link and a few other individuals, and outline how the residents will be accountable. I think that's the first and foremost thing, making sure that these -- that everyone knows what's on the table. How do we hold them accountable? How do we actually make them responsible? My program is a surefire, in a sense, and it's because it has 100% buy-in, not only from the process. from the prosecutors, local attorneys, a few judges, and then also employers that are willing to actually help us make a difference in individuals' lives. About 20 years ago, I was released from prison after serving five and a half years. I made a mistake, but someone along the way gave me a chance. In 2015, Rob Roberts signed my expungement papers. You do not know how good it feels to wake up without that weight on my back. The unfortunate thing is, is that I'm from Terre Haute, and I'm the only one that doesn't have that weight that I know, if that makes sense. How can I help people around me live the same type of life that I live? Especially with everything that's developing in Terre Haute, the casinos coming, the convention center. Individuals have criminal conversions from Hill's Department Store that is no longer in our community that's hindering them from actually seeking housing. Because of that, how do we change that dynamic? I'm not asking to save the world, I'm asking to save my community. Any questions?
Sure.
I've had some, I've hired some people that have been on work release. Is this, will this work like that? They have to go, like if they get a job, do they have to report back?
They...
Are they allowed, I mean, is it a certain time limit? That they go to work at a certain time, they have to be home at a certain time? How does that work with your...
With my program, it is, I don't want to design this as a jail. This is an alternative sentencing. I don't want Sashi to be C.O. Kumarin, the guy that I met 20 years ago at IYC when he was my correctional officer. I don't want that. I want this to be a home where people understand that they made a mistake, this is a second chance opportunity, and we flow in accordance. There will be time slots, there will be out time. One of the concerns last night was, will this be a home where people will be gathering? No, it's not designed like that, it's not big enough for that. They will have that time away from home, it will be reported and monitored through Sashi and the individuals there in regards of negative or positive, in regards of making sure that they meet the needs of the courts.
Okay, and is this a maximum 90-day? Is that what it is?
My program is 90 days. Last night I heard Sashi say 120. I know people, I'm flexible. It's mandated 90 days. I will go to court with an individual, I will sit with the prosecutor and ask for another 30 days if I feel that that's needed for this individual to be successful.
Thank you. Aye, yield. Jamie?
So is this, I know we just went through something similar to this a couple months ago. Is this going to be a lockdown facility?
No.
Okay. How many staff members will be there?
It will be one full-time, 24/7. Sashi will actually be living in the residence, and then he will have two individuals working on opposite shifts. I live down the street, I'll be accessible, my services are volunteer.
And there's been no guidelines or rules or regulations, anything set? You don't have, you know, a handbook?
I'm a programmer, ma'am. If he needs assistance with creating that, and if I'm allowed to actually work with the courts to make sure that that language is correct, we can have that.
I mean, I just would feel better if we had something in our hands to say, you know, these are kind of the rules, this is the user fee, this is, you know, they're in from this many hours to that many hours, they have to report to work, you know, some kind of, I know when we did the last one, they had a whole layout for us that, you know, we kind of knew, you know, what actually was going to go on and things like that. So I would just feel better, before we vote, to have something like that in my hand. At least knowing user fees, you know, how everything's going to be operated, how's this going to be ran, you know. I understand there's businesses around there, but there's also residential houses around there, and to make it feel safe around the people, I just would like to know more of the guidelines to what's going on there.
Understood.
Aye, yield.
Thank you.
I think I just have a couple of questions. The programs, like, are you going to have, like, alcohol and drug programs? Are they going to come there, or are these people going to go to the court ones that we already have?
We plan on collaborating with some of the social services here in regards of Hamilton Center, the new social services facility that's actually working up, getting case managers, using ISU Social Services Center, Psych Department, Mental Health Center, using graduate assistance, graduate assistance with supervision from a licensed therapist. The assessment that goes along with individuals taking this is a psychological assessment. I am trained and certified in it, and it is something that I actually use on a day-to-day basis at Indiana State for professional development.
Okay, so those services will come to there? They won't be going out to them, or they may go to Hamilton Center for those services?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It'd be twofold. Hopefully, we'll be able to connect, Sashi will be able to get a vehicle to actually do transportation. I'm not expecting these individuals to have license. So to mitigate any risk of actually reoffending is possible is what we're here for.
Okay, and I guess just from working with the courts, I don't know if anybody, will some of these be on home detention also, or will this be their sentencing?
This is an alternative sentencing.
Just the alternative?
From what I know, am I correct, sir? Maybe a stipulation before sentencing, pre-sentencing, if I heard Mr. Roberts correctly, and I'll step out.
That's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, thank you for just considering this request. I would just like to address it from the prosecutor's perspective and the court's perspective. This was originally brought to our office's attention by Judge Rader. Judge Rader asked us to participate in a meeting with these two individuals and someone from the public defender's office and someone from our office. And we had an opportunity to question these gentlemen because it is a new type of program, but it's not a unique type of program. Essentially, I see this as a reentry program. This is an opportunity to meet the needs of individuals that we currently have a gap in our community that we're not meeting the needs of. It's not designed to be a substance use disorder program. It's not designed to be a mental health program. It's designed to be a reentry program for people that are coming back into the community and to meet those individuals' needs. Now, maybe they will have some needs that require services from Hamilton Center, but it's not necessarily going to be those that have the most intensive needs in that area. It's not going to be those people that have the extreme or severe needs for the substance use treatment. We have a portion of our community that come through the criminal justice system. They may be arrested, and they may be pre-trial, or they may be post-conviction, but either way, they don't have the life skills. One of the things that I found most encouraging is, over the last 10, 15 years at the Department of Corrections, I mean, over the last 10, 15 years at the Department of Corrections, the PLUS program that Sashi talked about running that program is one of the major developments in the Department of Corrections that we have seen that has had an impact on recidivism. So to take that type of programming and put it as a reentry program combined with the change program that's been talked about tells me that we've got a base of programming that's going to really have an impact on these individuals that may have an opportunity to go through it. In fact, the PLUS program has been so successful at the Department of Corrections that that's one of the tools that we utilized at the prosecutor's office and continue to utilize for encouraging people to go, when we know they have to go do a prison sentence, we include in our plea agreements and in the sentencing order ultimately, that if they go and they successfully complete that program, they are often given the opportunity to modify their sentence to get out early because we know that it has an impact on recidivism. We know that it has a positive impact on these individuals' lives, and so when they come back into the community, they've developed better life skills, they've developed better communication and coping skills. And so that's why I'm encouraged by the program that they've presented. Does it have all of the fine details put into place at this point? It does not. But what I do know is that it's going to be treated like every other type of program that comes and works with the criminal justice system. The judges will be monitoring the individuals. The prosecutor's office will be actively involved in recommending people into these programs or objecting to people being placed into these programs. The probation department, if someone is doing this post-conviction, the probation officer will also be monitoring the individuals and their compliance and their progress. So there are a number of different steps that are going to be taken by the criminal justice system for monitoring compliance for the individuals, and obviously, that requires a lot of communication. And so we've talked considerably during our previous meeting about the need for that communication. And I will tell you, I've been doing this for 20 years here in Vigo County. I've seen programs come, I've seen programs thrive. I've also seen other programs come and I've seen them die. And if they're not doing the things that they need to do to be responsive to the court's needs and the court's supervision, their program will not get referrals from the courts, and the program would disappear. And I believe with the type of zoning that's being requested, if it's not being used for that specific purpose, it reverts back to its current designation. And so I think if, those of you that are familiar with some of the other similar types of programs, some of you may be familiar with the Truman House. Truman House started off with one house and I believe eight individuals. They're at three houses now, and amongst those three houses, I believe there are close to 24 individuals total that they have in there at any time. And there's a waiting list for that program. We have a similar success story with the Odyssey House, and we have probably the most tremendous success story with Next Step. And those of you that are familiar with Next Step, you know what they've done for those with substance use disorder, but you also know what they've done in the community and for their neighborhood, some of the programs that they've put into place. So we've seen these programs that understand the needs of the court, they work well with the courts, and they thrive. And like I said, I've seen other programs that have disappeared. I think this has the potential to thrive. I think there are some details that need to be worked out and ultimately need to be finalized, but I also know that if those details aren't there, the judges aren't going to use the program. Our office is not going to use the program. So they will be put in place, but obviously, the biggest hurdle to having a program like this is the location. I think it's an ideal location just because you've already got other programs, specifically Club Soda, in that area. Club Soda has, I believe in that building alone, over 90 residents, and I think they serve, with some other facilities, they have over 120 residents. Here, we're talking about a program of eight to 12 that's filling a gap that those other programs don't have, and that's why Mr. Modestet asked me to be present and to give our recommendation and our encouragement for passing this program and, or starting this program and ultimately asking you to give them permission to do that.
Mr. President? Martha?
If someone else has, I've already spoken once, so if someone else has a question.
I have to.
I just had a couple of questions on, I don't think they're for Mr. Roberts, I think probably they're either for Jeff or for Mr. Kumarin. Is this being operated as a nonprofit?
Yes.
And do you have nonprofit status at this time?
Yes.
Okay, so what is actually the name of the nonprofit then?
It is, as I believe in the petition, change with periods.
Change, okay.
So C period, H period.
And maybe you said that earlier and I just missed it, but I wasn't clear about that because that's a key thing. So thank you, I just wanted to verify that.
Mr. President? Mr. President, just a reminder, public comment is still waiting.
We need for you to state your name and address for the record.
Okay.
And then present, thank you.
I'm Jennifer Mullen Perry. My address on record is 3347 East Broadlands Avenue, Terre Haute, Indiana, 47805. I am here to speak on behalf of Mullen Renovations LLC that is owned by me and my twin sister, Jessica Mullen. I was at the area planning meeting last night, and I'm going to seem like the bad guy, so I will state some opposition to this case. So my first thing is, no offense to those doing this, it's a great program, but I think it's missing some fine details. I think there is a plan to hope and not a plan to do right now. I think it's missing, you know, a budget. How are we going to feed people? How are we going to pay utilities? And I come to you all because I am coming at this from an investment standpoint. Me and my sister, from Mullen Renovations LLC, we purchased the historical home right next to this property at 2521 North 13th Street. That house was built in 1890 for a Colonel Nichols. If you've been in that house, it has ornate architecture, and it was my intention a few months ago, when I sat across from the table of the man who was 80 years old, whose wife died of cancer, to restore that home to its original beauty. So behind that house sits a carriage house on North 13th Street. So my intention, along with Jessica's, was to renovate those homes. Now, we have asked about the value, what happens to the property values of the, and I know they could use some work anyway, but those of you who know me know I have been trying to revitalize Terre Haute for the last two and a half years. So I know this is needed, but it puts me in a pickle as an investor. So I talked about it with a couple realtors, and they said, if this does go through, you should sell your property. The only resolution that I can think of is selling my property to another house for That is a resolution I have thought of. So I am not in a financial position, if this gets passed, to invest $100,000 in two more homes in that area. So that's my main concern, and I think that's it, really, so.
Thank you.
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde, 1411 Poplar Street. I was going to say so many things before these two people spoke. Anyway, I'm going to keep it short. Right now, on national television, we are hearing the call of reform of the police. That's going to happen. Nothing's going to stop that. Flood's coming. Once you get the police reformed, the second thing you've got to reform, and this is going to be here, local, you involved, and that is getting the people, when they leave jail or prison, to get back in the community. You've got to come up with real programs that work so that we can keep people from reoffending. I don't care what the charge is. Your job as leaders of the community, and I might add, all of you ran to be a leader of the community. I'm being a leader, you know, because I want to be. You guys wanted to be a leader, and you got voted in to be a leader. Well, I've got news for you. Right now, the police are working on how they're going to reform the police, and I'm all for it. They're building a new police station, they're going to have ways to train their police officers better. That's going to be a problem, and it's going to be mostly solved, and all we've got to do is every two or three years, make sure they're going in the right direction. What we don't have in this county at all is a decent program to reform and get back into our community, our citizens, that have been in trouble with the law, no matter what you call it. Now, I'm not saying it's going to be easy, nor am I saying I know all the answers because I don't, and neither do you. What I am saying is we need to have more than one program, and we need to test more than one idea until we find the ones that work, and then make them better and better. And you don't need one place. Like I told you six months ago when we had a similar discussion on this, you're going to need at least four or five places for the city of Terre Haute alone, where hundreds of people can participate in. And it's going to have to be able to be done for at least 10 years. And it's going to have to be able to be done for at least 10 years at that level. And if you, if it works right, slowly but surely, you won't need so many people to be in the programs. But I've got news for you. Right now, you need to think really hard about how you're going to do this. And this program sounds like a good start. Now, does it have problems? Can't believe how many problems it's got. However, all those problems are easily solved if there is leadership. And that leadership, gentlemen, starts with this council. Thank you.
Counselman Darrison.
Is it okay if we can speak now? We don't have anybody else coming from the public?
Is there anybody else from the public? That's it.
Okay. Just, I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I think that the, what's brought here today is certainly needed. Obviously, some people here are very passionate about it and I am too. And I, I do agree that we do need more of this, the reentry program. I'm happy to see some of the folks involved with Judge Rader, that there's a letter attached to this ordinance, if you haven't seen that. Rob Roberts is here and I trust what he says through the court system and the prosecutor's office. The only thing is, I would hope that we wouldn't take action on this tonight. We would give it a little bit of time because while it is a great program, I think, and will be, when we're going into a neighborhood that's a residential area, I think these folks need to know what's, what changes are coming. So if, if we don't vote on this, I think that'd be a good idea. And it will be coming back next month, the first week? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll yield until then, but I guess that's it. I yield. Thank you.
Anybody else from the council? Amy?
Has everybody spoke? I've already spoke. Just to kind of echo what Neil was saying, you know, I'm not saying, I think it's a good program. I think we need the program. My concerns are, you know, user fee cost, you know, who's in charge of paying utilities? How are these utilities going to be raised? Who's in charge of feeding, you know, the people living in the house? Where's that money come from? Some rules, some regulations. I mean, these are things that I would feel better having in my hand before we could take a vote. That's not to say that, I don't say that, you know, we need, we need, we need places like this and I'm not saying that, but just some guidelines, some, some, a little bit more information. That's all I ask for. I yield.
Mr. President, I believe that there's, there are so many programs out there that either are similar or exactly like this program that at the next meeting, and I'm all for what Neil said, not voting on this tonight, that I would think and hope that you could come up with a few guidelines to help us make the decision here as well as what Neil said. Let's hear what some of the other neighbors say. I don't know if she's the only one that it affects or not, but I, I would feel more comfortable knowing a few more details about this prior to a vote. I yield.
Yes. If I may respond to a couple, if others don't have questions.
Earl.
Tammy. Tammy.
So I, I just want to applaud your efforts and I really appreciate the fact that you've already went and spoke with the prosecutor's office. You've got the buy-in of the folks that you've, you've brought to the table. My concern's the same as everyone's here, the same concerns that I expressed last night. We're going to give you the time to bring back that information that we need because we all see this as something that can be positive for our community. The second thing that I want you to think about is, as was said last night at area planning, is absolutely this is needed. We don't just need one house. Someone said, we need 10 of these facilities, right? So whatever standard we set right now will be the model that will be accepted in the community or it will be, if it's not successful, the example that people continue to bring back to us when somebody else wants to start one of these types of houses. So that's what I want. We want you to bring that information back to us. We want you to be successful and we want you to set the next house and the next house and the next, next house up for success by getting it right the first time. I yield.
I can't speak directly to the user fee, obviously, tonight. We'll, we'll, we'll put a paper to, or pencil to paper and see if we can come up and speak with prosecutor's office about ideas in that regard, if we can come up with that for you. But I can tell you, the, the program for the individuals living there for those 90 days, as Mr. Walker said, it is a program that he has designed. He has worked on it over a number of years, I would say, a decade in developing and as he said, application in other areas. It is a very detailed and structured program that he has. I have not given that to you. He shared quite a bit of it with me. I can put that together and get that to you so that you can see the type of training and skill development and community involvement that is designed within the plan over the 90 days to reinitiate the individuals back on their own feet and, and into the community on their own. Again, the idea is to get them in this house on a temporary basis and then out on their own, on their own two feet. So it is a structured plan. Not everybody's working at the same time because you have different work schedules and so your counseling might be at different times, but they're all going through the same detailed plan and process. And, and I can get you that information. And the last point I would like to respond to, Ms. Mullins did bring up on behalf of Mullins Enterprise last night, two of her main concerns, one being value, the other being maintenance of the property. As to value, I had not looked prior to that, but I did go out and it's probably like anything, you can find information that's going to back, you know, one opinion or the other. I pulled an article from a gentleman, Daniel Lauber. He is a certified planner and an attorney in River Forest, Illinois. His article is a, as he put it, "A representative sample of 50-plus studies" that he was looking at, "What's the Effect?" And, and just to read to you briefly, it said, "Over 50 scientific studies have been conducted to determine if the presidents of a group home or halfway house has any effect on property values, neighborhood turnover, or neighborhood, neighborhood safety. No matter which methodology has been used, every study has concluded that the group homes not clustered on the same block have no effect on property values, even the houses next door, nor on the markability of the nearby homes, neighborhood safety, neighborhood character, parking, traffic, public utilities, nor municipal services." So my point being, at least as to his comment with regard to her concern of value, numerous studies have determined it does not have a negative impact. Secondly, with regard to maintenance of the property and maybe as well, related value, there's no guarantee whoever buys that home, even if it's not a reentry home, how that private individual's going to care for that home or his ability to improve that home or his, his or her ability to maintain that home. So there's no guarantee saying, if we don't do this and we leave it to private individuals, it's going to be better for her and the neighborhood. I would argue that in fact, the odds are better that if you have a, a, a business, an entity that is operating there like this, whose feet essentially are held to the fire by the prosecutor's office, by the courthouse, their business survives on their reputation and their presentation. If they don't maintain the place, it's a bad reflection on them. So I think they're more motivated to improve that property and, and present it in the way the neighbors would want it. With that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you need any more information? Thank you. Next item?
Special Ordinance 6, 2021, rezoning of property located at 1122 and 1160 Locust Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Lou Britton, representing the petitioner, Terre Haute Associates. I practice with Cox, Warner, and Bumble and Sullivan at 511 Wabash Avenue. Also here this evening is Larry Recalade, who will be the property manager for this project in the event you have any questions that I can't answer. The, the property at issue is the property shown in yellow on this photograph. Some of you will recognize the property to the east of it as Gerschmeyer High School. Some of you will identify that property as Chauncey Rose and some of you will identify that property as the Boys Club, depending on your relative age. The property here is, this, this large building is the former IGA. This property, which is the property in question, or that is to be rezoned, is the site of the Blood Plasma Center and a Dollar Store. Presently, and, and the property is bounded, as you can see here on the west, by the railroad And, and Bush Restaurant right over here is another high point for, but anyway, there are large parts of these buildings that are currently vacant and they have been remodeled in, or will be remodeled into self-storage units, which necessitates a rezone from the current classification of C3 to C5. The existing uses are still permitted under the C5, so we don't have a problem there. But self-storage units are a specific classification in C5, thus we need to take it up to a C5. As was reported, the area plan commission gave it a favorable, favorable report and the staff also recommended favorably. If there'll be, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. If I can't, I'm sure Mr. Recalade can. Thank you.
We do have a member of the public.
Public comment.
In Donald Hyde, 1411 Poplar Street. This time, because I know exactly where this property is, I know exactly what it's being used for, and I know that you're right. Right now, part of the property is, shall we say, empty and stayed empty for a while. So my question, I don't have one for the board as much as I have for you, sir. What exactly do you plan on doing for this land? Because if I understand you right, you're going to do a lot of building and the building will not give the community any income at all, but rather you income, in the sense that you're going to turn it all into a storage unit. And I remember as a child, Wabash Avenue by the railroad tracks, all the way to Poplar Street by the railroad tracks, there were huge storage buildings built on both sides of the track and they were used by the businesses downtown. And as a little boy, I thought, well, they have someplace to put the merchandise and I can't wait till they go put them in the stores. Then what happened? Downtown Terre Haute was took over by the mall and downtown died for about 20, 30 years. Not completely dead, but whatever. And those storage buildings were eventually tore down. I asked, could you, what do you plan on doing with all that land? And is that exactly what you're planning on doing with it? Plus, is there a way, is there a way where you can save part of the business area? And also, you don't own that big empty grocery store. People in Indianapolis do. And for you to buy that out would cost millions of dollars. I'm not sure you're able or willing to do that. I'd like to answer those questions. Thank you.
Well, I don't own any of it. Terre Haute Associates owns it and I think the object of any business is for that business to make money, not for that business to somehow turn a profit for the city. But their current plan is, as I said, to take vacant space, currently unoccupied space, which is not producing any income for the owner, and turn it into space which will be producing income for the owner and will provide a service for the citizens of the community, that is, to provide self-storage. I was surprised to learn that they really expect that this will be a, a, a product, service, I'm not sure what you want to call it, that will be heavily used by university students. When I was in school, I left for school and everything I owned was in my car. I didn't, I didn't need storage space, but apparently that's not the case anymore and students do use these sorts of self-storage spaces. There is no current plan. This rezoning does not involve the former IGA store. I point it out because it's adjacent to the property that's being rezoned. If there are any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Councilman Nation.
Lou, I noticed that you've got a big odd-shaped parcel that has the existing building on it, but it looks like you've got a small square parcel down there. I'm sorry, the owners, Terre Haute Associates, have a small, small square parcel down there that used to be a burger place years back.
Yes.
Why is that in the rezoning?
Well, it's just common ownership. They all, they all own it and, you know, if, if they were to, if the proposal works, they may well want to expand with new, new storage units there. You know, I won't tell you that the change in the use is going to have of, of these existing vacant buildings is going to have a big impact on the tax base. Might have some slight increase in assessed value. But if they would decide to locate new storage buildings over here because of the success of this project, obviously that will help the tax base.
And you say self-storage. Is this all indoor?
Uh huh. Yes, they will be inside. The current plan is all inside the existing buildings.
Right. And the tenants of the existing buildings, there's no reason they would leave, right?
No, they're still, they're, they are unaffected by this. There's, there are large parts of this facility. I can give you an idea here of the square footage. Should have done this math earlier. There's almost 27,000 square feet of vacant space in that, in those existing buildings now.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted.
Lou, there wouldn't be, is, is there any change in egress to the, from the street at all, in any way? Okay.
No, that's not a high-traffic. You know, the self-storage things are not a really high-traffic sort of thing, so I, you know, it's not, I don't have any significant input there.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Anyone else? Councilman DeBonne?
If there be no more discussion, I will move that we vote to take action on Special Ordinance 6, 2021.
It's been moved by Councilman DeBonne, seconded by Councilman Nation, that we take action on Special Ordinance 6, 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Councilman DeBonne?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we pass Special Ordinance 6, 2021.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman DeBonne and seconded by Councilman Darison that we approve of Special Ordinance 6, 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same side? Motion carries.
Thank you again.
Next item, Michelle?
Special Ordinance 7, 2021, rezoning of property located at 2315 East Margaret Avenue. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm with the law firm, Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowery. Tonight, I'm here representing petitioner, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Wolf owns this property. It's currently Zon C2. He's proposing to rezote to C5 for, for the potential buyer who would like to put storage units behind the existing building. You might remember, it was an archery place years ago. The potential buyer would like to put storage units behind it and use possibly the front building for some type of commercial use. use. As Michelle stated, area plan gave a favorable recommendation last night, the staff also gave a favorable recommendation with a couple of questions. One was a question regarding the setbacks, and currently the property is being surveyed to see, because on Beacon, it looks like it might be close, but it's actually going to be surveyed to see what the actual lines are like, so those issues will be resolved in the, in the near future. But as stated, the petitioner is here tonight asking this property rezoned from C2 to C5 for the use of storage units. If you have any questions, and the property is located at 2315 East Margaret Avenue. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
We do have a member of the public.
No.
No, we don't.
Counsel? Amy?
There's no further questions, I move that we vote to vote on Special Ordinance 7, 2021 is presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Aller and seconded by Councilmember DeBonne that we vote to take action on Special Ordinance 7, 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Any council discussion? Amy?
There's no further discussion, I move that we approve Special Ordinance 7, 2021 is presented.
Second.
Hearing none, it's been moved by Councilmember Aller and seconded by Councilmember Bowlin that we approve Special Ordinance 7, 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
We have a request for a addition to the agenda, which I will grant. Chief?
I didn't realize there was no public comment tonight, I wanted to come to my last city council meeting as your fire chief and tell you, thank you for supporting the fire department over the years, I know we didn't always see eye to eye on things, on some issues, but I know we always had the, the community's best interests at heart. And with that, I'm not going to say much more, other than, I was cleaning out my office over the last couple of days, and it was bringing back a lot of memories. We got our trophy from the Shield, where we beat the police department five years straight. And councilperson Garrison had a big hand in that, getting that started, and I appreciate that, thank you for those, for those memories and those good times. But I just want to say thank you, it's been a long, great career, and I've enjoyed it, and I'm going to miss seeing your faces, but I'm, I'm not going anywhere, I'm sticking around, so I'll be back to visit. But I'm not leaving you without a gift.
Speaking of cleaning out your desk.
My desk, yes. I'll leave these here for you.
Thank you.
There's some pins there, and I hope you take one and remember all the good times and forget the bad times. Thank you again, and Councilwoman Lauterma, thank you for your fine words.
You're welcome. Point of privilege.
Well, Chief, you know where to find us, the first and second Thursdays of every month, so.
Yeah.
If you still want to come.
You're welcome.
Yeah, if you don't have anything to do on first or second Thursday, come and see us.
Maybe I'll come in and make a public comment on every agenda.
Point of privilege, Mr. President, point of privilege, I, I just wanted to say, I also had the opportunity to serve as the chief on the 9/11 Commission for the, for the county, and the entire time up until just this last couple of months that I was on there, you served as the chair of that group, and I probably gave you as much trouble as anybody on council during my tenure here, but you were always a very professional about that and about our, our service together on 9/11, and I appreciate that and wish you well.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate that, thank you. Have a blessed day, take care of all.
Thank you.
We are going to have the review of JADCOR CF1 Tax Abatement Form Compliance for Resolution 5, 2015. You should have a copy in front of you. And I just made a couple of quick notes. I think they made a typo under Section 3 salaries, in that, I'm sorry. No, ignore that, ignoring that statement, I'm sorry. The current number of employees matches what they originally estimated on the, their original SB1 from 2015, and just a side note, they did not insert their assessed value information under Section 4, otherwise the form is complete. Just a reminder, your actions will be to vote that they're in substantial compliance or not in substantial compliance. If you vote that they are not in substantial compliance, we will set it for a hearing in 30 days. At the hearing, you will vote to approve or deny. If you have any questions, we have a city attorney sitting right here.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Garrison?
Yeah, I'll just move that we vote CF1 RS5 2015 in substantial compliance, based on the records here.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by, excuse me, Councilman Garrison and seconded by Councilman DeBonne that we find this form in substantial compliance. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. It's found in substantial compliance, thank you.
In front of you, you'll have a copy from JADCOR for their Tax Abatement Compliance Form CF1 Resolution 35, 2017, and I believe I had my notes on reversed, this is where I think they made, you could consider it a typo, I think they wanted to indicate they're 10 less employees than originally estimated. Again, assessed value's not filled in, but otherwise the form is complete.
Mr. President?
Councilman Garrison?
Yeah, 255 employees to 245, salaries still over 10 million estimated and actual, I think, are pretty impressive, so based on that, I move that we find CF1 RS35, 2017 in substantial compliance.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Garrison and seconded by Councilman DeBonne that we find the CF1 for Resolution 35, 2017 in substantial compliance. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. It's found CF1 RS35, 2017's found to be in substantial compliance. Next.
Warren Village, and this is for Resolution 13 of 2012, you should have a copy in front of you, they actually have more employees than originally estimated, and they did fill out the cost and assessed value.
Mr. President?
Councilman Garrison?
I move that we find Warren Village CF1 RS13, 2012 in substantial compliance.
Second.
Second. Tammy? It's been moved by Councilman Garrison and seconded by Councilmember Bowlin that we find the CF1 form for Resolution 13, 2012 submitted by Warren Village to be in substantial compliance. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. It's been found that Resolution CF1, or the CF1 Resolution 13, 2012 for Warren Village is in substantial compliance. Next item?
This is Warren Village 2, this is for Resolution 14, 2016. I just think they flipped their numbers, I think they're supposed to indicate they have more employees than originally estimated, but they put the number 3 under actual for employees retained instead of additional employees. Otherwise, they completed the form.
Mr. President?
Councilman DeBonne?
If there is no discussion on this, I will move that we find CF1 RS14, 2016 in compliance.
Second.
Second was, Sheriff? It's been moved by Councilmember DeBonne, seconded by Councilmember Lauterma, that we find the CF1 for RS14, 2016 submitted by Warren Village 2 to be in substantial All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. We find RS, the CF1 for RS114, 2016 for Warren Village 2 to be in substantial compliance.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Azar and seconded by Councilmember Aller that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.